That motion carries. Okay, we have our third public hearing on the millage rate. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, ma'am. We will hold the third and final public hearing on the proposed millage rate. First, staff will begin with a brief narrative summary of the proposed millage rate, following which we will then call for those wishing to speak in favor of the proposed millage rate. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, we ask that you come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. You will have up to 10 minutes to speak. Following from that, we will then call for those wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed millage rate. The same standards will apply for that. You will have 10 minutes to speak. Are there any questions or comments about how the public hearing will commence this evening? Okay. At the June 24, 2025 regular meeting of the Stevens County Board of Commissioners, the Board adopted the fiscal year 26 government-wide operating budget for the period beginning July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2026 at $41,623,134. Accordingly, and based on that budget, the Board of Commissioners is proposing the same maintenance and operations, M&amp;O, millage rate for fiscal year 26 as that from fiscal year 25 for the unincorporated district at 10.38 mills. The Board of Commissioners is also proposing a decrease of 0.16 mills for fiscal year 26 from fiscal year 25 for the incorporated district at 12.62 mills. The value of a mill is projected at $939,016. Continuing to promote transparency in local government, last year, the Board of Commissioners pulled out three separate county-wide special districts from the M&amp;O rate so that residents would know exactly what they are paying for in regard to solid waste, emergency medical services, and fire services. For fiscal year 26, solid waste will have a mill rate of 0.78 mills, emergency medical services of 2.05 mills, and fire services of 0.74 mills. The Board of Commissioners was able to lower these rates for fiscal year 26 from fiscal year 25, thus resulting in an overall millage rate of 13.95 for the unincorporated district, a net decrease of 0.39 mills, and an overall millage rate of 16.19 for the incorporated district, a net decrease of 0.54 mills. Again, while the Board of Commissioners is having to advertise a tax increase for the M&amp;O rate due to state requirements regarding advertisement of the M&amp;O rate, both the incorporated and unincorporated districts will receive a net reduction in the overall millage rates to the special district rates going down. Residents will be paying a lesser tax rate this year than they did last year. This is the third and final public hearing for the millage rate, following from which the Board of Commissioners will consider adoption of the proposed rate. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay. All right. With that being said, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed fiscal year 26 millage rate? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed rate? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Mark Eilman. I reside. I appreciate you taking a few minutes and allowing me to speak. I reside on East Tugelo, right down the street here. We're at 962 East Tugelo Street. I also own Mattress, Dakota, and I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And I oppose the property tax increase. I voted last November to cap the property tax increases, and the legislation passed. I'm at my surprise when I heard that individual counties could opt out. Well, I thought it was state law. Nonetheless, when I heard that, I knew Stevens County would be one of the first to choose to opt out.
Sir, we did not opt out. We opted in. House Bill 581. Yes, sir.
The school board, which is not us, who we do not control.
Isn't this Tugelo Board the one that's putting forth this?
No, this is the Stevens, the Board of Commissioners, and we opted in to House Bill 581.
Okay.
We're over your county. Your school system voted to opt out. They are the only entity that voted to opt out. The city, county commissioners, both voted to opt in. You home will be paying a lesser tax than you paid last year in money. Bottom line.
Okay. So the next thing that we got is the change in the assessment in the mail.
Now, that is with the tax board, which is also not us, but we're happy to hear.
Okay. I just, I guess there's so many entities here that I don't understand because all I know is that the bottom line is that after doing the reassessment, they just reassessed my home and added 31% value to my home, fair market value, which is net gives me a 31% increase in the tax that I'm going to pay.
So on your personal home, the value that will be used to calculate your M&amp;O, the county tax, will be your value from 2024?
2024.
Any homesteaded property?
Homestead. That's for House Bill 581 that you were referencing early. Now, obviously, the assessed value that you described will be applied to the school board and the other taxes that are variously on the bill, but it'll be calculated two different times.
Okay. So now I really don't know where, where I'm going, what my net net is. Because, I mean, I see property tax increase. I pay, you know, I have lots here that I pay taxes on. I have my main residence I pay tax on. I pay property taxes on my inventory, my store every year, which I bought with tax, already tax paid money. And then every year, I have to again pay taxes on my inventory. So when I hear, oh, property tax increase, then I'm going to come down and try to find out what's going on.
Of course. And unfortunately, and I know Vice Chair Redmond mentioned this last time, values on property for almost a decade were held artificially low in this county. We were served from the bottom of all counties in the state of Georgia in our evaluations. We did not follow the mandates that come from the state, but therefore, we got fined, and we couldn't collect on public utilities. And so unfortunately, that has led to a major drastic jump this year for us to be quite as painful if it had been done in incremental steps, but it had not.
And that explains why my house payment went from 1248 to 1430?
Your house payment?
Well, you're an escrow then.
Yeah, my escrow, because my escrow, they said that I didn't have enough in escrow to cover my property taxes.
Yes, but that would be the reason.
Mine did the same thing.
Yep. And then I see something like this, that if it's going to go up another 30% because of fair market value being assessed on my house, then where does my, you know, I mean, I have a disabled wife. When she had two strokes, I had to quit my traveling job and open a business here in Dakota, you know, looking at, this is where, you know, we want to stay here in Dakota. We love the community, love Stevens County, love the city. But then here we, you know, then all of a sudden, here we go. It's like, you know, limited income, I get a small business, we struggle. I do pretty well, you know, I'm happy with Dakota. I want to stay in Dakota. But, you know, is this, is it going to get to a point where I've been a business environment or a home environment that I have uncertainty? I don't know what's going to happen.
Well, we hope to see those evaluations level off. The problem is, is they were not done. So now we've had to jump, and I know even the valuation of the residents I live in, I think every commissioner sitting up here would not sell their house for what their valuation came in from.
I would. I'd sell my house right now for what they, what y'all think my house is worth. Because, I mean, even my mortgage company doesn't tell me my house is worth that much.
Mortgage company bases it on the value when you paid for it unless you get an evaluation.
Well, I have. That's, I mean, it looks like, it looks like somebody went through and just like, you know, said, oh, we're in Atlanta, and this is, and we're just going to take Zillow. Whatever Zillow says that people's houses are worth, that's what it's going to be.
There's a, there's a very specific methodology that they use to evaluate those prices, not a broad stroke.
I mean, you know, my, my house went from 234,000 to 342,000. And it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house out here on East Tugelo.
A double wide selling for 210,000.
That's ridiculous.
Well, I work in.
I mean, you know, when you start valuing stuff like this, it makes people rethinking about moving to Stevens County or opening businesses here, or, you know, or, you know, a company going to come in and saying, you know, is this going to be a viable business, you know, environment for my business and for my employees to live and work here?
I've been over the years that, you know, to the point, maybe it wasn't the fact properties, the properties had not been reassessed a long that, you know, people were paddling happy with that. But eventually, the state said, enough, you can't keep, you're going to have to reassess it. Not going to get you to keep saying, oh, it was worth what it was, you know, you have to reassess it.
Right.
I'm being hit, yes.
But it's, it's one thing when you get hit, it's another thing when you do it to yourself.
Well, I didn't do it. The state thing is stupid. We had no choice.
But, but who's the state? Aren't those the people that we elect?
Sure.
Yeah. So if you elected them, then you are in fact doing it to yourself.
Well, then a lot of us elected them because Republicans and states.
All right. Well, I appreciate you answering my questions and giving me some clarity to it. Again, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the job that you do for the citizens of Stevens County.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed fiscal year 26 millage rate? Yes, sir. If you'll come up.
We can just talk. It's okay. We had like a town hall last time, and it was actually pretty good.
Willie Adams. So the thing I read said that the millage rate is going to go up seven or eight percent. I mean, numbers, I mean, those just round numbers. Depending on whether you're incorporated or unincorporated.
Yeah, there's some minor differences.
Yeah. He just said that the millage rate is not going up, that we pay the same millage rate as we did last year.
Were you, so for your M&amp;O, so like if you have on your tax statement from last year, you'll see an M&amp;O line, right, which are general operating budget for the county? And then you'll see some other lines, one for fire and EMS, solid waste. So what didn't change is that M&amp;O line. We basically held it exactly the same.
Right.
The decrease he's talking about was in the other three categories where the millage rate went down.
So I guess what I'm confusing.
So your property valuations is making it really confusing, right?
Right, yeah. Property valuation went up, so I know I'm going to pay more taxes.
The percentage of, just for example, if you had a $100,000 piece of property last year, and now you paid 7% or whatever against it, right? If your property went to 200,000 and you're paying 6.5%, that's still more money you're paying, but your rate went down. That's.
Yes. So that's my question. Is the millage rate going up or down, or is it moving?
The millage rate's going down. Well, the total millage rate, the total millage rate's going down for the county.
I know the school board went up.
The school board, well, they rolled back. They just didn't take a full rollback. They rolled back.
We won't talk about them. They're not here.
Yeah, let's just talk about.
Well, I'm just trying to be transparent about the numbers.
Yeah, no. And so, so that's what I was getting at. Because I was sitting there looking at, look, everything I own went up 40 to 50%.
In value?
In value.
Okay.
And then I see this thing saying that what seemed to be on top of that, you guys want another seven or eight percent. I'm like, whoa, wait a minute. Who adopted a budget that they couldn't pay for?
It's a budget change.
If I can, to clarify, and Christian, correct me if I'm wrong on this. I believe one of the announcements, the way it was phrased was the total revenue was what was increasing at the 7%. The millage rate's going down, but because the reassessment that happened, and again, for a homesteaded property, it will be going off of last year's evaluate, evaluation. For non-homesteaded properties, that, that new valuation will be utilized. And so the, that's where that 7% came in, was that actual, I forget the, the term that was used, but is it the revenue is what's in that announcement. But it's not the millage rate that's going up that 7%. The millage rate is going down.
But it, I'm pretty sure I read 7. something rate increase.
You did, but it's what's coming in because of the increase of value. It's not what you're being charged, it's what's coming in.
Is your, is your property homesteaded?
One of them is, yeah.
So the property that's homesteaded, you will be paying less cash in your taxes this year than you did last year?
For the county.
To the county.
To the county, to the county.
Okay. Because there's a lot of numbers that go into that ultimate number that's at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I fully get all of that. I just, like I say, I'm a busy, I'm not as busy as a lot of people, but I'm a busy guy, and I get this, I, somebody, a friend of mine sends me this thing, and it's from the county, and I read it, and I'm like, holy crap. You hit me up with a 40% valuation increase in one year, and, and I understand why that was. But, and then, and then, you know, the way it read, it's like, you know, you're going to get another 7% on top of that 40%. And I was like, whoa, you know.
And our goal is to, you know, we've got to kind of level off, is to keep, and Chris has said this, is to keep driving the millage rate down. This year was really hard, and I'm not going to lie, because of the 581 House bill, we kept getting different numbers. What are we getting in? What's coming in? I mean, it was a game until we got right up to it. It's not like we had it early on like we typically do. And I, I mean, I'll just be blatantly open and honest on that. But next year, we anticipate being able to drive the millage rate even further down, because now we've got a better hold on what this House bill 581 looks like as far as revenue to our county.
Maybe we can fine tune some of that M&amp;O as well.
We're going to do our best.
Sure. The goal is to drive the entire millage rate down. If you stabilize property values where you don't have these drastic changes in value, let's just say your house goes up on average 3% to 6% a year, right? That would be normal inflationary kind of value, which is okay for everybody. Well, if you can keep your budget for the county at roughly the same, you shouldn't have these big swings at all, and you keep driving the millage rate down and not try to control it with a high millage rate. I would rather have a low millage rate that we can just tweak a little bit year to year and keep that balance.
I know, I know people that live in Atlanta neighboring counties that don't have as high a millage rate as we do.
Sure. But I will caution people on the millage rate. You also need to go look at the value of a mill. That's important. I mean, to see how much their mill is worth.
Well, yeah, their mill's worth a lot more because their property values are higher.
Exactly.
But at the same time, to me, that says that they're probably a little bit more efficient with their money, too.
Could be. I don't, I don't know exactly which counties you're talking about. Some do it better, some do it worse, I'm sure. So.
But that's all. So I, I mean, I get it. You know, everything went up, everything went up.
And our budget only went up 3.1%. That's all we increased the countywide budget at, was 3.1%.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I enjoyed the discussion.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed fiscal year 26 millage rate? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jerry Smith. I think I sent y'all an email about, you got that? I'm 80 years old or will be in the morning.
Congratulations.
My birthday present. I've got a house that I spent about $100,000 buying, building about 32 years ago. This last assessment was $474,145. It's ridiculous, just to be frank about it. Not only is it going to cost me avalanche tax, it's going to cost me insurance. I just can't wait to see what the insurance folks are going to tell me. I can expect a few hundred dollars right there, too. In addition to that, every time I buy a gallon of gas, I'm getting, y'all hit me about $2, $3. That's 4% local tax, sales tax, every time I fill up the car, every time I go eat, it's a couple dollars. So, you know, it's just money coming here and money going there. And I just don't know how long I'm going to keep it up. I live on social security, a little bit of retirement, and a little bit of military retirement. I have nothing left. If, one question, is the current assessment going to be the, the last one, or is it going to be the prior year?
So it will be your last year?
Okay. It's going to go back to the prior year.
I'm sorry.
As long as your property is homesteaded.
It's going to go back to the 24 assessment.
If you are homesteaded, do you have a homestead exemption on that property?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Then it's going to be the 2024 will be your base year.
Thank you. This thing scared me to death.
It scared a lot of people.
Did you look at the sheet?
The sheet that came in the mail?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yes. I've seen them. We get lots of pictures on those sheets.
I'm not homesteaded. I'm really scared.
Yeah. It would be my single largest expense. It's higher than my gas, electric, water, everything. The property taxes got reported, it's higher than that. It's my one single basic expensive monthly expense. I break it down in a month, because I figure if I don't put the money up to pay the taxes in a year, I won't have it.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, if it's last assessed, it would be $373 a month, property tax, besides all the sales tax goes out. I don't know what we're going to do. I don't know how long, how much longer I'm going to stay. I had, I built the house, half the house myself. I put about $100,000 in it. I hate to leave it, but I may have to.
We understand.
I mean, I don't want that to happen.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed fiscal year 26 millage rate? Yes, sir.
Again, I'm not sure I'm in opposition. I was just ignorant about how everything works. But I did have a question. I was wondering, you guys had said that the, the.
Just state your name and address. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Micah Ervin, 36 Oak Cliff Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Ervin.
Yeah. So just had a question. You, you guys had mentioned that the state had mandated the, the raising, and they had fined us and all that stuff. Was just wondering what aspect of the state that was. Is there anything that as citizens we can do, either with our representatives, you know, talking to them, or is there like an actual entity out there that's doing, that's, that's controlling this, or how does that, how does that work?
You want to go ahead and talk about the sales ratio?
Yeah. So there's, so there's a, the Department of Revenue uses what they call a sales ratio. And what they do is they compare what properties are assessed at versus what they sell for. And so every time that we have a home that is assessed at 200,000, and then someone in this community buys it for 400,000, that's kind of, that's the math that they're looking at. And what they're looking at is over the past five years, homes that have sold inside of this county are astronomically higher than their assessed value. And so that's how, and there's a, there's a very complicated math problem that they use to.
We get supplied a report every year, the sales ratio study. We get it, and it shows you all 159 counties and where they rank in that. And as Tara mentioned earlier, we were third from the bottom.
And they is the Department of Revenue for Georgia, the state of Georgia?
Correct. Yeah.
Craig just took a two-day class on this.
Thank you.
And it is, it's, they're looking at, because they want it to be, they're trying to make sure that we're not doing anything funny with the numbers. They want it to be what the true market value is. And so they're looking at actual sales that are being made inside this community. They're not comparing it to sales in Atlanta. They're looking at sales here in this community and where our assessments fall in there. And part of the 581 requirement, too, is how often these assessments have to be done to make sure that we stay long-term, keep them as accurate as possible. And like Commissioner Redmond said, is we keep those accurate, we can continue to drive the millage rate down, just like this year. Net millage rate for the county is going down. And the, the plan is to do that, continue doing that long-term, as, that way we can kind of match with this growth that we're seeing. So, so hopefully that, that offers some clarity to you.
And then I guess the other question is, I, I read the newspaper, I read Facebook stuff. I'm just trying to, trying to figure out what's going on, and everybody was kind of saying the millage rate's going up. Is there some entity that's not the county that is actually going up then, or am I just not understanding right?
I don't think anybody's millage rate is going up. It is which assessed value is being utilized.
Right.
Because we are using 2024 for homesteaded properties, homesteaded properties will not see this large increase from the county. However, there are entities that opted out of 581, and so they are using the most recent assessment.
Okay.
But the school board, they rolled back their millage rate, but they didn't take a full rollback. So the number will be less, but they're still collecting more money than they collected the year before. And so.
Because they're going with the inflated, or the.
New assessments. Yeah, it's not saying it's wrong. I'm just trying to be transparent about how the math works. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, unfortunately, was, I thought I knew what I was talking about, and then I came here, and I was like, I don't have a clue what I'm talking about. So.
No, you're good. Appreciate it. Come by and chat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed fiscal year 26 millage rate? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing is closed.
We have one item of new business, and that is a motion to adopt the county millage rate.
No, ma'am. It's, it's, it's written there. We'll be adopting the millage rate and all necessary documentation, including the levy associated with it.
Motion from the board.
Motion to approve the millage rate as proposed.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion. Any matters from citizens? Anybody have any questions? You're limited to three minutes. We're happy to chat. All right. I'm sorry if you'll come up to the podium so we can hear.
On millage rate, you said that property taxes have went up, and it's, and it's assessed on a property tax, and that we were 3%, we're third from the bottom of the list on property tax. What are we, as far as our millage rate itself, where do we fall in on that statewide?
I, I don't think that the, I don't know if they keep a list on that, because the millage is.
They used to keep a list on that.
Because the, the, the value of a mill is different everywhere?
Yeah, because if, I mean, your mill, if your mill's worth $2 million, where ours is only worth 900,000, it may throw off the skew and mislead you to believe something that's not necessarily true, right? Because they could have a lower millage rate, but they're still collecting a larger amount of taxes because of the value of the mill. That makes sense?
A mill's different in every county.
Yeah, the mill, the value's not the same county.
Why would it be different in every county?
Because of the size of the properties, the number of properties. I mean, what that value, Dean and her team have to calculate what the value of that mill is.
Per county.
Yeah.
A mill in Havercham is not a mill here.
I know we used to come in near the top as far as the millage rate in the whole state of Georgia.
That's absolutely possible, because our value of our mill is so much lower than other counties.
Or was.
30 mills is the average in Georgia.
Total?
That's what it says. I looked it up.
But when you say that, that may not be just the county, right? That's the total combined mill.
It's total, yes.
For your school board. If you're in the city, they got a separate mill.
Well, it's county and municipal village rate.
Right, that really.
I know it didn't answer your question. I just don't have the list in front of me. I will, I'll be, I think we can get the list, but I'm just saying.
This could be.
Well, we used to come out on the list. We used to get it.
It's just, I, I think that that may not paint a very accurate picture because of the value. We would have to then go in and figure out what the value of those mills were, because they're kind of inversely related. So as values go up, millage rates go down because of the total tax digest and what is available. So even though locality may have a lower tax rate, or the millage rate may be lower, they may be bringing in a lot more money.
It says the average.
She signed up for taxes because we're over 70. Assessment came in with school tax on it.
That's not.
Yeah.
You get a reduction up to $2,500.
You get a reduction, but it's not, you just get it wiped out.
It's because the value of, I, I assume it's because the value of your property went up. You went over the, you went over the threshold for where the cap that we provide, like where you get a reduction, your property's now more valuable than that, and you owe more taxes than that. So you're just paying what's left over. Because there's a discount, right? You get up to a certain level, starting at 65. I feel like we didn't provide you the answer you're looking for. I, I can work to try to get you the list. I mean, I'm not against that at all. For the city, the city's supplied water?
And that's not us, I can assure you.
Well, I know, I know that, but I'm saying, I don't know what he's, I haven't seen what he was talking about.
You, you've gotten it. It says like we're falling in the range, because we got the one that said we were not in range.
Okay. I mean, I believe you. I'm just saying, I haven't looked at.
Some of that information has dropped off, but that's not something that we issue. But I mean, we would, we'll try to answer your questions as far as the millage. The water?
Yeah, you get a can.
No, we don't supply water.
We, we don't control any of the water.
It was sold to the city in 2000 by the county commissioners at that time. Couldn't tell you.
couldn't tell you, yes, sir, couldn't tell you any of those five commissioners on the board in two thousand, but around two thousand, two thousand and one, the city and county worked out a deal for three million dollars and sold the, the county water to the city, so that's their enterprise fund now, and, and that's another challenge from our board